But let me welcome everybody to the Simsbury Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for February 21st. We have a number of things, pardon me, we have a number of things on the agenda tonight, so I think we'll get started. The first is, has to do with the resolution of the litigation.
Chairman, if you want to see the office.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. We have one member missing. Diane Madigan is out of state and Dave Moore is going to be the alternate who will sit in for her, so that will raise the total number of commissioners to six, sitting on this matter tonight. And now we're ready for moving on. Okay. So, yes. We have minutes to go over tonight, therefore, two meetings, and let me just get mine out.
You obviously don't have your tablets, because we did not have internet here a couple of minutes ago, so we don't have your tablets. We have your shoulder for a few minutes.
How about if you, is it easy to show them, George?
Those are not available.
Yeah, okay. So it's the minutes of February 5th and January 30th. Is it easy to put them, or preference for putting it off till, put these off till the next meeting?
I would suggest doing that.
Okay. So we will do that. The January 30th meeting minutes and the February 5th meeting minutes will be a consideration for our next regular meeting. So now, under new business, the pending litigation relative to the Vessel RE Holdings, the town attorney, Bob DiCrescenzo, is with us tonight and actually is going to help us get this rolling. As folks can imagine, there's a lot of protocol associated with this process and we want to make sure it goes right for everybody perfectly. And so, Bob?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Your first agenda item is a little bit out of the ordinary from what you deal with. It has to do with the settlement of a land use appeal which is pending in the Superior Court. That land use appeal is entitled Vessel RE Holdings LLC versus Zoning Commission of the town of Simsbury, and it carries a docket number of HHD, LND, CV-23-617-0429, and it's pending in the Hartford Superior Court in the land use docket. Just to refresh your memories and to put into the record, this land use appeal comes from, comes out of an application that was filed by Vessel, RE Holdings, which I'll refer to as Vessel, and that application was filed with your commission on January 18th, 2023, after a series of public hearings, and it was filed under the Affordable Housing Statute, 8-30G, which I know you're all familiar with. After a series of hearings, the commission met and denied the application on May 15th, 2023. Thereafter, the applicant, as is their right, appealed the denial of the decision under 8-30G. And that appeal was filed in May 20th, May of 2023. It was transferred to the land use docket in June of 2023. And since that time, there have been a series of discussions about settlement of the land use appeal, which the statute itself encourages the commission to do. Under 8-30G, as I'm sure you're aware, the commission has the obligation to consider alternatives that, to the project that was denied. And what you have in front of you tonight is the joint motion pursuant to General Statutes 8-8N for entry of judgment in accordance with stipulation, and this is the document that you all have with you. This is a court document. This is not a zoning commission application or anything like that. What the law requires, and it's a little bit complicated, is the Connecticut Practice Book requires the commission, before it settles any land use appeal, in any form of settlement, to place the proposed settlement on the agenda of a public meeting, which is what you've done tonight. And I'll just read the important part of the practice book, and the practice book are the rules that lawyers must follow to prosecute cases in Superior Court. And the section that we're operating under tonight is Section 14-7BJ, which states, "No decision that is appealed under General Statutes 8-N," which this was, "shall be modified by settlement or stipulated judgment unless the terms of the settlement or stipulated judgment have been approved at a public meeting of the municipal agency that issued the decision, in this case, the zoning commission. The proposed settlement shall be identified on the agenda of such meeting, which then shall be posted in accordance with the FOI, and the reasons for such approval of this settlement shall be stated on the record during such public meeting of such agency and before the court." That's where you are tonight. You have in front of you a proposed settlement. It's been duly noticed on your agenda, and when you consider a motion, that motion must include the reasons why this commission believes in the settlement. Now, I'm going to turn it over back to George, and I think George will invite a presentation which will show you and the public the differences, or the revised plan which is captured in the settlement document. George?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would ask you to invite Mr. Hollister on behalf of Vessel to walk you through the primary changes, or the stipulations to that matter.
Pardon me?
I'm now invited.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Elliott, commission members, town staff, attorney DiCrescenzo, and residents. I'm attorney Tim Hollister from the firm of Hinckley Allen &amp; Snyder in Hartford, and I represent the applicant, Vessel RE Holdings. I should explain that my client, whom many of you met during the negotiation process, Mr. Levy, is out of state touring colleges with his son, which is a very important thing to do, and I excused him, but if he needs me or I need him, I can get him on the phone by text message. But hopefully, we'll just go through this fairly quickly and fairly, in a straightforward manner. In summary, as attorney DiCrescenzo prefaced, we have an agreement on paper to resolve the development plan for 446 Hop Meadow Street, and the key sort of parameters are that the proposal is now 48 residential apartments down from the original 80, and down from the 64 that was approved by the Wetlands Commission. Three stories down from four, 60 parking spaces with 14 in reserve, meaning an area that would be open space unless and until there was a need for those additional spaces, and that is down for more than 100 spaces on the original plan, and a so-called darker brown palette, color palette, for the exterior siding of the building. Updated landscaping and a donation of, by Vessel of the land that it purchased along with this parcel at, between the Heritage Trail and the Farmington River, about 2.6 acres. Now, I think attached to the agenda tonight is the original draft agreement that attorney DiCrescenzo and Mr. McGregor and I put together initially, and that spelled out the so-called whereas clauses that always go into an agreement. But then we were asked, you recall the way the negotiations progressed, we eventually settled on 48 units, and Mr. McGregor asked us to come up with a, an updated site plan reflecting the final term, and that's what is on the screen, both in terms of the building footprint, the reduced parking, the reserved parking, which you see at the top, the augmented landscaping where there had been parking before, and George, I don't know if you have the color palette that you're able to display, but I think the commissioners would have seen that. But what I want to, what I want to stress at the moment is that the only change that we made to the January 29th draft is basically to update and re-letter the exhibits. So there's, there's no, been no substantive change to what you saw several weeks ago in terms of the draft agreement. We just called Exhibits B and C, showing the footprint and the location, and then the color palette, but nothing else has changed separately. Attorney DiCrescenzo introduced you to the, the process. I would just emphasize that if the agreement is approved tonight, this is not the last step, you would be authorizing attorney DiCrescenzo and me to file a joint motion in the Superior Court, which then goes to a hearing with Judge O'Handlon, who runs the, what's called the land use docket in the Superior Court system, and Judge O'Handlon will conduct his own hearing, at which any citizen could speak if they so desire. Judge O'Handlon will be looking to make sure that it's a fair, objective, and so-called arms-length agreement, that it's a complete agreement, that there's no terms that should be in there that were omitted, and vice versa. And that hearing is scheduled for a week from tomorrow, the 29th, and it is a remote hearing, but it will be available on the Court's Superior Court livestream service. And I should also note, you may know that the Wetlands appeal, which was taken against Vessel from its, the Wetlands permit that it was issued back in April of last year, will also be on for resolution at the same time. So we're, I think we've been, I can say that we've been working together to try to resolve everything to everyone's satisfaction. I'm happy to answer questions, but before that, I do want to thank the commission for the time that you invested in this. I want to thank Mr. McGregor and attorney DiCrescenzo, who have also put a lot of time into the resolution, and you all know the definition of a good settlement. No one's happy, but everybody accepts it, and that's, I think, where we are. So unless there are any questions, that's what I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Just one. Is there a date prominently placed on that, just that exhibit? Is there a date on that exhibit somewhere that we can see?
On this particular one?
That exhibit, right there. Yeah, the one on the screen.
Well, it's attached to the document that's dated yesterday, so in that sense, we can distinguish it from earlier versions, if that's what your concern is.
Yeah, if I could add, Mr. Chairman, the stipulation that if it's approved here, that will be signed and brought to court, when entered, will be in the form of a court judgment. And within the stipulation, on page three and four, there are nine different specific stipulations that spell out the specifics of what you're approving in terms of the settlement, and there are also a series of exhibits attached to the stipulation, including that rendering. So if you approve this tonight, authorize us to sign it and send it to court, and if the court enters it as a judgment, that and only that is what can be built as a part of this court judgment.
That's correct. It essentially becomes a court order.
So you never, the commission and the public would never have to worry that it were to become four stories again or something like that. It would be part of the court order, and it would be a violation of the court order, which is a very serious matter, if anything but that were to be built by anybody. I know it's not Vessel's intention to do anything but comply fully with the stipulation.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No comments? All right. And now, what do we want to do next?
Sam doesn't have anything else to ask.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have. If not, we'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman, for how you would like to proceed on a consideration of the motion.
Now, again, the questions are resolved in your minds. You're settled. Okay. So I'm going to read the motion, and it's, it's fairly brief, so listen up. This is, I move that the zoning commission approves the joint motion for Superior Court approval of settlement dated January 29, 2024, revised February 2024, in accordance with Connecticut Practice Book 14-7B, in order to avoid any uncertainty of the outcome of the appeal, and to comply with State of Connecticut General Statutes, Section 8-30G. End of motion. So we need a second on that.
A second?
And any questions, comments, discussion? Then all in favor, say aye. And opposed, say nay. Then it's unanimous at six to zero, approving the motion as I read it. Thank you.
Shane. Shane.
So what I want to take a few minutes for right now, that sort of settles some of the formality, but I thought, this isn't a public hearing, but the commission is interested in what citizens might have to say about the resolution, if there are questions. But it's not an opportunity for a debate or anything like that, but if you have comments that you'd like to make, step up to the podium, and again, we, we need to remember to extend courtesy to all involved tonight, so. Anne?
Yeah, thank you, Anne McDonald. Thank you, everybody. There are some key issues that have never been solved. We never said we wouldn't compromise to something. We know we're, everybody's hands are being tied on this. We're being pressured into it. There's still the issue of the water coming out of the two areas on our property. Our property is at the border. If you fold this little map here, on the line, it's a hillside, right? It's a hillside. They have a water pipe coming out of here that collects all the water off of the property, and it's spewing out at 900 gallons per second, once all the stormwater system underneath fills up. They're willing to have some kind of insurance money for us to fix our banks? It's not going to cover it. This, it's a hillside. When they strip the property, they're going to strip all the tree roots, all these trees, the 15, 20 trees that are on this ridge right here. Nobody came down to look at the piece of property. They're going to strip all the roots. Those trees will die within five years. You strip all those, the building itself where it is, you have all the water coming off the roof of that, all the water coming off the lot, in those stormwater systems. It only holds two inches of rain. How many times in the last couple of years have we had more than two inches of rain? Many, many times. And let's say it rains two inches on Monday, it might, it's going to be full. How long does it take to leach out? Don't forget, their little stormwater system is right underneath. You're so close to the bank. Who do we sue in the end to recover? This is our property right here that's being destroyed. Who do we sue in the end to get our, the restoration on our property? And all the chemicals and everything else that's going in there? And I see, are they still planning to use the bike path as an emergency entry and exit? It says for emergency. It's not cleared in the winter. A three-story building, there are power lines 30 feet away from that third story. When you have power lines like that, you're actually, too, when you're, you have like an extension ladder, let's say somebody needs to be saved on the third floor, what do you do on the other side where the power lines are along the bike path? When you have like the extension ladder to get to that third floor, the other side of the third floor? If you had only two stories and maybe say like 40 apartments, it seems like rescues could be a little, I think it would be not as risky for three floors. The power lines are right there, if you walk down there, and there's like, and it's, don't forget, it's like 23,000 volts of power line. It's a major line. It's not like the little one line that runs down some roads. It's a major, major corridor for that. So it's a lot of stuff. It's too much for two acres of land. 40 apartments, like 40 parking spaces, maybe, maybe even 32 apartments, 40 parking spaces. We need to do something with the water. They want to buy that piece of property next to it, in the end, take the water there. Take it to that ditch behind Mitchells and 434 Hop Meadow Street. Send it to that ditch. Don't send it to our ditch. We don't have a ditch, we have wetlands. It's going to change the ecology in there. You take all those trees away, dry out the area, what depended on those wetlands, your frogs, your slimy gulpin, all like that, it won't exist. We're only 100 yards, football field's length, to the river. It's not fair. And that stuff, and those things have existed in that wetland area for years and years, and you build this, it will change. And we were never granted the opportunity to have a study done in that area, an impact study. And I asked for that one night, that Vessel would have to pay for. Why wasn't that granted, that we could have an impact study done on that wetland area? In the times of years that was critical, like in April, when the fish start moving and the frogs start, y'all, their business or whatever, and certain times of the year when the ecology matters. And we're not saying no, we're saying that it needs to be reasonable to the property in which it's on, and reasonable outflow somewhere else besides, yeah, it does flow over our bank, what's there now, yes, but it's over a large area, grassy land, it's filtered through over grasses, over the length of the piece of property. It doesn't all come concentrated in one pipe that spews 900 gallons per second out. I just, there's, there's a couple other points I have to make. If they plan on using the property at 434, if they, if they end up buying that and using that driveway, that driveway is only an easement of 10 and 1/2 feet. A fire truck is 13 and 1/2 feet wide, they won't be able to use it. Yeah, you might have to have one lane of traffic going one way to use that light. Great, that will be a lot safer for those people, but you won't be able to get a fire truck down there and back, or any large emergency vehicles. Was that considered? You're still planning on using that bike path as an emergency? You don't clear that in the winter. And what about, it's, it's, you need to reach those people in a certain amount of time. The parking lot is so small, small, how can you fit two ladder trucks? Two ladder trucks to serve as emergency for these people? Critical time. Two seconds, three seconds could mean a lot. I don't know where you're going to park them and turn them around in there. I don't know. Anybody else got anything else? Thank you for listening, though. It's very frustrating. We're not saying no, we're saying make it reasonable, and please, don't destroy our property. We're not going to be able to get our money back, we're not going to be able, in 10 years, when our whole bank is washed away, who do we sue? Do we go to the town because your engineers allowed it? Because you were pressured? Do we go to Vessel? They're going to be long gone. It's LLC, they're going to have sold it, they're going to be gone, made their money and gone.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from 15 Oakhurst Road. I don't have a comment about what you should do, how you should do it. It seems to me, I don't know enough about the law, but there seems to be water under the bridge. No pun intended, I guess. But I just have one question, and I think as the public and the taxpayers and the electors and the residents in this town, I think, I might have even read somewhere that this was supposed to be done before the vote. I, I think we should know why. We had six people vote in favor of the settlement for proper reasons. The discussions about the matter were held in executive session, so we are not privileged to anything that was discussed in there. We all have this vision of this 8-30G cloud that the big boot of Big Brother in Hartford stamps on our neck and says, "You have no choice." But that doesn't answer why specifically the decision that was made for six people to vote unanimously yes, that doesn't explain for us what, what went into the decision. Why was the decision made? And I think taxpayers and citizens and electors should know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kelly Rothus at 14 Knutmeg Court. Kind of to back up that concern, the vote was held before us, we, as the taxpayers, as the people who are going to be impacted by this building, before we even got to see the design, before we even got to see, you voted on it, before we could talk about it and ask for other provisions be made. That's a big concern. It is now shoved down our throats. So the people who are living next to it are being deeply impacted by this building, not just the water, but I will be looking at a parking lot. That is now my new view, where I have now a bunch of trees that will be dead. I would have liked to have had a big fence so I don't have to see headlights in my living room, that, but I don't get that chance now. You took that away from me because you didn't let me speak before your vote.
Anybody else? No? We need to do anything else with this, issue, this item? Okay. Oh, there's somebody else?
Hello, my name is Mary Day Grierson. I think, I know a lot of these older people because I've been, we moved here when I was in third grade, and I am back here, and I'm 40 years old now. I graduated from Simsbury High in 2001. Probably a lot of other people that are my age have children, they're busy. I'm just finding out about this, so obviously, I'm very late to the game. But I will tell you that from what I've heard, this is, this is not the Simsbury that I grew up in, and this is not the Simsbury that I was proud to be in. I live right across from what we call the triangle. I live on Holcomb Street, where Joan Coe really courageously a number of years ago protected that, and that was in conservation land. I'm completely unfamiliar with what our zoning laws are, but I will tell you this. I rode for Simsbury Crew, and I know exactly that river and how important that is, especially to the young generation. And to, to realize how close this is to the river and the water that's going to be flowing into there, I can tell you, all those kids at Simsbury High who rode crew that we're proud of fall in the river pretty often. And how is that going to be impacted by all these chemicals? I can also tell you this, this is just personal experience. I work at a farm up in Harwinton, and we absolutely have gotten more than two inches of rain multiple times. I work on a farm with acres and acres and acres of strawberries. We park cars in the fields at our farm in Harwinton. And this past summer, when we had those multiple weeks of rain, the entire thing flooded. I have seen what happens with major erosion, and that is on a flat piece of property. That's not right against where the river is. And what that lady was saying, whose property is next to it, that will absolutely happen. There will be major amounts of water because we will have major rainstorms, and it will flow into that river, and it will cause major erosion. And we are known for our bike trails and our bike paths and for conservation and for the farms in Simsbury. This is not helping that. And it sounds like it's already a done deal, but we need to do much better than this in the future, much better, especially for our younger children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Godikson. Ann covered a lot of the damage that we expect to happen to our property. Excavation will do some of it. There's going to be a clear cutting of that entire property, and so there'll be extensive excavation for the parking lot and the building. Then they're going to be digging down to install the storm drain systems. And also, because it's so close to our border of the bank, when they do excavate, again, the trees will suffer because half the root systems will be past that border. As Ann said, there's the two large pipes that will discharge water down the bank when the chambers are full, but the chambers, when they're not full, will continually leach down below them. when they do excavate, again, the trees will suffer because half the root systems will be past that border. As Ann said, there's the two large pipes that will discharge water down the bank when the chambers are full. But the chambers, when they're not full, will continually leach down below them. And since the topography is not a solid mass of earth, it's a long swale down to the brook. So there's no density there for it to absorb. So we're very, you know, worried about our bank. So as far as the unpaved parking spaces, that is where they had planned to put the snow, because they never designed for the snow. And I'm assuming that is still the case. Maybe you can, you can answer that. Now, even without the snow, that's untreated water that's right next to the top of the bank, which will leach also. And if they're intending on putting all the snow from the parking lot in that small area, that will be a huge amount of water that will melt again into this abused bank that we have. So these are some of the things that were spoken about during all the hearings, but I don't see any resolution so far on these issues. There's also, and I don't see it in the drawing, there was a pipe that came off of the roof. So that went around the building and then discharged also onto our bank. Well, I didn't see it in the drawing, so...
It's against the state property, in fact.
Okay. Well, anyway, it's like if you lived on a street with all your neighbors and they decided that they didn't want all the water coming off their gutter system, and everybody got together and decided to send it over to your yard. That's basically what it feels like, and is. So once again, I know they made some offer about liability coverage, but it was really, it was lacking as far as the amount. And then we also wonder, well, if that's the case, and we're sure there's going to be some damage, how is it accessed and can it be guaranteed? I can see that being a real problem, trying to get money from the damage. We also wondered if Vessel was going to hire an onsite manager, because there's a lot to take care of in this development. One of which is maintaining the storm drains, which sounded tricky to me. So that hasn't been talked about. Also, Vessel's business plan includes a franchise model. And so we're wondering, will they just sell the development to a franchisee? And then we won't know who's owning it, or we won't know their ability to do so. And again, the fire truck access is, is a puzzlement there. The traffic entrance was never great. The landscape, the trees, the mature trees you see here or on the rendering of the building don't exist. So it's kind of a fantasy illustration that they're showing. It looks pretty, it looks nice, basically, especially here, but, you know, they don't exist, and it takes a long time for trees to grow. At the very least, if this does go forward, we would expect a substantially high fence running along our entire border. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I didn't expect to speak about this, but I will. First of all, it's, this law is absolutely impossible to deal with. It's, it's just an invasion of a town. And what we have to do as a town, as our legislators, is to change the law. The law is so restrictive that there is no way that this board, even if you wanted to, could do something about it. And every town is coming against the same problem. So it's not a Simsbury problem. Vessel has taken on the law and decided how they can maximize their profits. It's a business. You look at the law and you see how you can work the law. This is something we cannot sustain. And only through legislation can we do something about it. And it's shameful that people weren't paying attention until it came home. But it's a job for every one of these people who are elected and the people who we are voting for, to go to the legislature to change. We have affordable housing. We have rents that are affordable. They, what I would like to know is, one, who's going to manage it? What is the management model? Apparently, the renters, from what I have heard, are running the business. The renters are part of the management company, if I'm correct. So I would like somebody to come and talk about that. Also, I'd like to know, are they going to monthly, quarterly, or whatever, give the town a record of the rents, the rents, the rental agreements and the fluctuations in the rentals? And whether they're in keeping with what they promised? So I think we have a major problem. We can't change this. We're a little bit late to the, to the, to the board. But it's everyone's responsibility. If you want your town to be maintained appropriately, it is up to all of us to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you for coming, for those who aren't staying for the rest of the meeting, but we're going to move on to our next item.
Bruce, could I, I just had a quick question. And this might be more for George or Bob. But is there a meth, is there a way? Because I think that the call for some transparency as to like how the decision was made and how we came to the, to the settlement, I think that was a, maybe a reasonable request. Is there of, of an avenue to provide that kind of explanation? Or is it a later date kind of thing?
Yeah, so I would answer it this way. I mean, certainly, we could provide a detail of how the process unfolded. We certainly can't disclose the discussions in executive session. Those are part of settlement discussions. I'll let the lawyers talk about that, but I mean, that, those are, those are... Now, again, no action, no action was taken in executive session. Any action you took was in public. But I mean, we detailed the process, but can't disclose...
Yeah, I think it would, it would be possible, maybe appropriate, to do a staff report. This is kind of an unusual process that people aren't familiar with and sort of outline the, not necessarily the specifics of executive session, but the choices the commission was faced with and how you all came to the conclusion you did that the settlement was in the best interest of the town. That could be done for a subsequent meeting.
Do we need to, to make a motion for that? Or is that just something that we can, as a board, request separately? Or what's the best way to get that done?
No, I don't think you need a motion. I think you've given adequate direction. If it's the will of the commission and I, sort of reading the defenses.
It is, yeah.
That's all we need. We, we'll work together on it and get it to you all, and you can post it on your agenda for the next time and make it available to the public. Because it is sort of a arcane process that is not familiar to most people. And what I do and what David does and others, it's secondhand. But to most people, they don't even know what the practice book is and how that fits in with the zoning regulations, I think would be beneficial to the public.
Great. And if that could be in like as much plain language as possible, I think that would be helpful.
Always a challenge for us.
I know.
We'll do our best.
Does anybody else have more to ask? No, okay. Then we're going to move on. The next item on our agenda has been shifted to a future meeting. The next item was a site plan that has to do with a home in Terriffill, but that's going to be coming up in March at some point. In any case, our next item after that is... We, we're going back to application twenty-three thirty-six, which has to do with food trucks and the use of food trucks in Simsbury. And this started earlier in the year, and actually earlier in two thousand and twenty-three, and carried through the fall, and here we are. George, do you want to run through the background on this thing, the sequence that got us here?
I know you had some suggestions on...
So again, you do have a, so the public hearing is open, so you've got a continued public hearing. We did do a memorandum to the zoning commission, which was posted, where we, where we walked through kind of how we got here. And I, I think it's, I think everybody, hopefully, everybody knows how we got here. You know, we've been, we've been spending a lot of time over the last year on, on this application, and there has been a great deal of, of public interest on it, particularly from the restaurant community and others. And not, not just them, but originally, the commission had entertained a text amendment that would have allowed mobile food vendors to locate at, at only food and beverage locations in our community. Midway through that process, the commission decided to withdraw that application and, and consider a, a more permissive text amendment that would allow, this was current one, which is the current one you, you are reviewing now, which would allow mobile food vendors at any commercial location in our community. Again, you, you have, you've kept the, the public hearing open. You requested that I provide the, the original, I say the original, the, the former text amendment. I provided that to everybody. It's included in the staff report. Commission asked for that, and it provided all the public comments we've received to date on the application. You've got a couple new ones in front of you. There's a whole bunch in your Dropbox. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think your options, again, your options tonight, remember, you've got a public, public hearing is continued, so you're going to ask and, and open that back up. And you're certainly going to welcome folks to speak on it again and then decide whether or not you want to close the public hearing and what direction you want to go.
Thank you. First, I, I just want to call attention to the document we've received previously, but it identifies, as George just went through, the commission may choose to close the public hearing tonight. The commission could approve or disapprove the pending amendment allowing food trucks in all commercial districts. The second option is the, the commission could approve or disapprove the original text or some modification of it, allowing food trucks only in commercial districts where an occupied food and beverage establishment exists. This is permitted under the statute, as the text herein is more restrictive. This is without renoticing as a public hearing. And the last option is to take no action at all. This application was generated by the zoning commission. The zoning commission withdrew it once, and it was resubmitted later in a somewhat different format. But there's no requirement that it ever come back. We can elect not to take any action, and it goes away until some future time when somebody else brings it up. So those are the three scenarios. We don't need to make a decision right now. But I'm going to reopen the public opportunity to share their thoughts on this issue. And then we'll resume the discussions after the public has spoken. So if there are people here tonight who want to talk about the application on food trucks, please step up to the microphone.
You want our names?
Names and, and address.
My name's David Richmond. I live at fifty-two Wood Duck Lane in Terriffill. I also own four commercial parking lots in Simsbury and have my two businesses here for the last twenty-nine years. So during the day, I walk up and down Hop Meadow. I live on this road because my office building's right across the street. We walk to Fitzgerald's, get a slice of pizza and a soda or a drink, and we walk back. We go to the coffee spot. We might get a muffin if my wife's not with me, or something of that nature. Walk back to the office. So how would you like it if you owned a business in town? You pay taxes, you, you employ people, and Brian DeVoe, who's a really good friend of mine, who owns Fitzgerald's, and he's one of the largest employers in town, there's a food truck right across at CVS, and I go there instead of Brian's? It's not right. You're competing with our own businesses who support all types of, of activities and events in town. But you cannot put food trucks. And I've, I've been in towns where there are food trucks. You get garbage. When they're cooking, it smells. But do we want this on this street without any? We, we get what? I'll get two hundred dollars for a day to let a guy park in my parking lot? Never. The other thing is, I've been on the chamber for over thirty years. I was the chairman of our government, government affairs committee and talking with lots of chamber members and lots of restaurants and food vendors in town, convenience stores. No one's for this, nobody. So my position is that we table this, bring it up maybe again in the future. But at this stage of what's happening with the economy and everything else, we need to support our own businesses and not let Tommy's little wooden pizza truck park in my parking lot for two hundred dollars a day and compete with my friend's business, Fitzgerald's. So let's support our own businesses and not allow food trucks into this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Coe. It appears to me that the food truck issue has become a political football pitting the special interests against the rule of law and fairness. The town of Simsbury has always invited various businesses to town for entertainment, services, and education. The Simsbury Performing Arts Center has invited many bands and other entertainment venues to provide a service to the public. Many of these outside entities do not pay taxes to the town, but provide a service to the community. Many of these venues add to the quality of life and bring people to the town. Foot traffic is one of the triggers that add to economic development. The rules of the zoning commission should not isolate the town from creative activities that enhances the community. Food trucks have become a creative business that serves many areas in town by providing a site for food service. Many businesses provide food trucks with food for their employees. Schools should be able to have food trucks to provide food and snacks at home games. The town fields with sporting activities should be able to invite food trucks to provide food and snacks at the fields. The zoning commission has written a text amendment that serves the interests of the community. Add the following new definition alphabetically to section seventeen point four definitions, and I'm quoting, "Mobile food vendor. Any vehicle, unit, trailer used to store, prepare, display, or serve food and/or beverages and other merchandise or service intended primarily for the immediate use consumption onsite in proximity, cited on private property for the limited duration exceeding thirty minutes." The food truck should be required to submit public gathering permits to the town planner with approvals from all requirements to protect the health and safety of the community with the approved permit in view from the food truck. The text states, quote, "Serve food and/or beverages," end quote. Beverages should be defined that no alcoholic beverages be served from food trucks. Alcohol consumption along with... with prescription and several over-the-counter drugs can impair driving. The food trucks should not impact the parking by violating the site plans submitted to the town. In so doing, the town planner should make sure that all the rules of law are not violated. Fines should be imposed on all violations to the regulations. Food trucks are an asset to economic development and should be approved by the zoning commission. And all of my comments we posted on Simsbury Patch and Twitter at Joan Coe. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, let me just make one clarification on sorry, Mr. So the draft regulations only only apply to to the townwide zoning regulations. They do not apply to center zone. So there is no proposal to allow the food trucks in the center zone as part of the draft text amendment.
Thank you.
Kevin Farley, Farley Max, sixteen sixteen Hot Meadow. I started March sixth, two thousand and twenty, signed my lease, went through COVID, lost about a half million dollars in sales due to close a business. I'm way up in the farthest part of Simsbury that you can imagine. When we stated Chick-fil-A was in the truck supply parking lot, and no reason why when they built truck supply, all the guys came in, VPs, the directors of sales, want to work with me. Once they built it, didn't see them. They didn't care at all. They have a bunch of violations out there. But I understand about the food trucks. We had discussed about maybe at the events, like down at the band shell or someone's house, per se, not for non prop, you know, for no money kind of thing. But for me to see that that the businesses are coming back, I'm just starting to break even right now after three years. But the due to the cost of food, minimum wage going to almost sixteen dollars an hour, just finding staff after three years of people going and they're finding out about me. The food trucks, like if I make a thousand dollars, it's going to the town, this and that. They make a thousand dollars, they're going back to their town and it's not going to us at all. It's not creating any jobs. It's for their own own well-being. If you want, say, Chick-fil-A or whatever, drive to the towns that have them. We all have cars. That's about it. If you go to Enfield now, they have racing canes. They have like a four-hour wait for the drive-through. This town is a very quiet town. I'm from Windsor, but this is a very old town. From Abigail's to me, there's fifty-three places to eat. Fifty-three. We're all trying to survive. Could be Jersey Mike's, Fitzgerald's, Antonio's, no, a lot of different places. We're just saying, a lot of towns don't have food trucks because of the issue that they're there to make money. We don't mind, say, going to the football events or something like that to help out because I can't cater to football teams and stuff like that. We're too busy doing things. I just think that you have to look at what the restaurants bring to these towns, like John back here walks the Fitzgerald's Fitzgerald's for a coffee or muffin if his wife allows him. So if it, you know, but driving all the way up to North Simsbury, I don't get a lot of traffic. I'm starting to get a little traffic. But like Sarah's going to say, we pay a lot of taxes. We give back to the community. I just had donations today for the town. I just spent seven hundred dollars in gift cards and money out of my own pocket to support the town businesses. I don't see one food truck giving back to this town whatsoever. I know that Millwrights, Orel Tavern, and Han have their own food trucks, but they're brick and mortar. They pay for stuff. So they go different places. So my thing is that food trucks would hurt every business in here. If it's an event, like down the band shell or something like that, that's fine. We're not looking to stop anybody from making money. For us, it'll destroy me anymore because I'm just just starting to, you know, make my wife happy that I get a dollar a week to pay some kind of rent, whatever. So like I said, if you wanted to table it, it's fine. I just wish that the food trucks would be either at an event down the band shell or a brewery, but not every single day. Because like you said, he doesn't want he doesn't want to take any business away from his friends or anybody around here for two hundred. He can make two hundred dollars in a food truck. It's not about his money. It's about the the community. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Sarah.
Good evening. I know you're probably sick of hearing from me, but I'm going to restate. I'm going to go over some of the things that have been said in past meetings. So as you know, Sarah Nielsen and I represent Simsbury Main Street Partnership. We are a non-membership organization. We are not like a chamber of Congress. We don't have members. We actually represent brick and mortar businesses in Simsbury. It's been said that being against the food trucks, out-of-town food trucks, that we are against economic development. And I will tell you that that's the exact opposite. Economics one oh one teaches you a couple of things. For business owners, it teaches you that it is takes far less money to keep an existing customer than to try and go out and get a new one. It also teaches you that it takes far less money to keep an existing business than to try and go out and get a new one. This is what this does. We are keeping our existing restaurants. To clarify George's point, for the original text amendment, it wasn't just for food-based and accessory use for food-based services. We had called out the Simsbury Performing Arts Center. We had called out farms because of agritourism. We'd called out single payers because if Ensign Bickford or Dino Bell or one of the big companies wanted to come in and treat their employees, it's a single payer they can bring in whoever they want. We've called out lots of different exceptions because we do understand that there's a ton of things that makes Sims very special and an amazing place to live. But I'd like to remind the commission again that what we are trying to do, what the town should be trying to do, is protect its taxpayers. Now, the other thing is, people will say, well, there's other businesses, these retail businesses, that want to protect their taxpayers as well. And that's valid. But they're retail taxpayers. They came in with a business plan that said, I'm here to sell X, Y, and Z, and had nothing to do in their business plan with, I need to add a food truck on site in order to make money, in order to stay in business. That's not so when we're saying keep the food trucks as an accessory use for existing Simsbury food-based businesses, they pay exorbitant costs. I've gone through the list for you guys ad nauseam. They pay taxes. They pay taxes on the equipment. They pay payroll taxes, insurance. They, I mean, the list goes on and on. Food trucks from out of town don't do any of that. They come in, they drive in, they scoop up their money, and then they leave. Okay, you're giving a distinct advantage to non-taxpaying businesses. And again, I'll reiterate that the retailers that want to provide a food truck for their employees or to get more, this is not why they came into business. And not having a food truck does not negatively affect their businesses. But it certainly negatively affects the restaurants and the food-based businesses of over fifty of which we have here. You see, lots of towns are struggling with this. Some towns have let it be a free-for-all, and they've started seeing businesses close and either close for good or open up a food truck. And so you're seeing vacancies. So again, I'll remind you that Main Street does believe in economic development. We work very hard at it every day. We won an award from the Connecticut Main Street Center after COVID for the work that we did, outdoor dining regulations with the governor and everything else that we did. We believe very much in this community. You have restaurants that live in town. They employ people. They do all of the things that we've mentioned. And so we're urging you not to allow this free-for-all. Go back to the original, more restrictive, but still giving allowances and not allow this free-for-all because you will end up having vacancies in town, which will hurt getting new businesses in town, which will hurt property values, which will put a bigger burden on residential on our residential users. So at the end of the day, you will have unintended negative consequences. And there's lots of people who have pointed out today, this is not the Simsbury that they want to be a part of or grew up being a part of or remember. This decision will it will impact and it will change things negatively in ways that you can't even begin to imagine. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from fifteen Oakhurst Road. And she's right. Simsbury Main Street Partnership gets their money from the town. Fifty thousand dollars a year of our budget pays for Simsbury Main Street Partnership. I wish Sarah cared enough about economic development to have weighed in on crafting a development in the form-based code area as she does about lobbying for some businesses and against others. There are residents that own restaurants in town. There are also plenty of restaurant owners in town who scoop up their money and go back to their towns like Windsor where they live. They are not electors here. You're going to be surprised, but I really don't care about food trucks. As I said before, I rarely eat at them. I don't own one, and I don't own a property in town on which I would park one. The reason I speak and what I do care about is the rule of law, common sense, all people being treated equally, and our town governance representing the electors of Simsbury. We all choose to live here and contribute in various ways because we live that love this town that we've made our home. For those reasons and the following, I don't think this commission, right now, should approve the wording of the proposed, any of the proposed applications at this time. The effect of that should make the private restaurant lobbying group championed by Main Street Partnership very happy because it will mean no food trucks competing with them on any properties for now. It's hard for me to say that because the effect of not voting for either proposal prevents businesses that do want to have food trucks on their property from time to time from doing so. But other than whether a small group of a certain kind of businesses run by special people gets a special advantage over other town businesses, the details of these drafts need more fine tuning before food trucks should be unleashed on Simsbury, any food trucks. There are terms in these drafts that carry legal ramifications like accessory use that open the door to automatic unintended uses not foreseen. There's language that gives rise to situations in which food trucks might be, and I quote, "not immediately mobile," end quote, "intended as permanent slash semi-permanent that shall be considered a structure which could then be permitted by only administrative approval." We already have a situation where the Takay food truck has been moved from its approved location and is being used as an advertising billboard permanent fixture on West Street. And Table five seventy now has a similar unapproved truck sitting immobile in its grass. Frankie's has had one sitting there for years. In conjunction with all of the Fitzgerald's food trucks parked along Hot Meadow Street, business owners are looking for any way possible to skirt existing regulations for advertising. We need better guardrails and guidelines to make sure we don't back, we don't get backed into some unexpected situations. I can envision carefully crafted food truck permissions that actually enhance the vibrancy and economic development of this town. But but right now, these fall just a bit short. This entire process has been framed into economic protection for special business owners. There are ordinances and provisions in many towns in which food trucks actually increase economic development and consumers shopping locally, but we're so distracted by this one issue that no one is looking at the bigger picture or the finer details. No one is going to go to a food truck that was going to go to a more formal sit-down, relax, relax and have dinner and wine kind of evening like at Metro B. If that were such a concern, Millwrights wouldn't have put its ugly food truck in its own parking lot. The far bigger concern is what provisions are in here that opened a can of worms that needs to be looked at looked at more carefully. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Mr. Chair, we we.
Sorry. I'm not sure if now might be a good time to close the public hearing. We have had the public, you know, the benefit of the thoughts of the folks here who want to share. And I think there isn't going to be a value in leaving it open and it's a cumbersome element for us. So if somebody would make a motion.
I I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the food trucks. I'm starting to see them when I close my eyes at night when I go to bed. So I'd very much like to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Tony seconds. Are there any further comments or discussion of closing the public hearing? Then all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. So six to zero in support of closing the public hearing. So.
Mr. Chair, I've definitely heard a lot about food trucks in the last almost year now. I think I have all the information I would need to to make a decision, if that means anything. One thing I've heard a lot of, especially from the public, is the idea that it's it's kind of a conflict between economic development or special special priorities for different businesses. And I I was told something very early when I came onto the the zoning commission that we're not in the business of picking winners and losers. We're in the business of land use. Now, in that vein, it seems to me that the the most convincing argument by far I've heard, especially from the public, is the idea of of chaos or a free-for-all. I think that there are a lot of externalities to having food trucks at every single site in town. That would be heavily mitigated by limiting those food trucks to places where we know are already serving food. The traffic is going to be more similar. I think it's very reasonable to say that a food and beverage food truck limited to a place that already serves food and beverages should definitely be a accessory purpose or accessory use. And it's been reinforced by a lot of the testimony. But it's not about protecting a certain business or or any of that. What is a what is the best use for the land that we have? We've already established that these places should sell food. I think that they should continue to sell food. And the mobile food vendor just seems like a good accessory use to a place that already does it, in my opinion.
Well, in that you weren't here then, Tucker, I'm going to just offer a little background information. If you could take it for what it's worth. But the text amendment that was dated July seventeenth and was the initial one that was withdrawn in September, it was withdrawn by a six to zero vote. There wasn't any doubt in anybody's mind that that initial draft and the key concern, my my interpretation, key concern, was that that framework puts the owners of those establishments that are bars and restaurants in control of what 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 food trucks come into Simsbury. And all they have to do is say no, because there has to be an owner's permission for a food truck to come in. They have to be going somewhere, and they need a permit.
Right.
There was discomfort over the idea that, you know, I'm not sure that I'm seeing chaos occurring. But in any case, there was discomfort with the idea that the proprietors of those locations would be in control of the food truck business in Simsbury. And there was discomfort with that. And therefore, it was withdrawn unanimously. And and an alternative approach was submitted some months later. So and there we have a wider enabling of food trucks to do business in Simsbury. And and as you hear tonight, that's there's opposition to that, too. So I just wanted to make sure it was clear that it wasn't, there was consideration of that first scenario where the people who operate the bars and restaurants would be in control of the food truck business in Simsbury. And it was six to zero. And I don't know if the other people were still here, what they would say. But I'm not sure it would change very much. Three of us are still on the commission. And one happens to travel today, and two of us are sitting here. So.
Sure.
I think I understand where Tucker is coming from. But I think we should be honest in that if, in fact, the commission decides to limit food trucks to locations that are already serving food, in essence, what we're doing is banning more food trucks from coming into town. Because I don't think there's a single restaurant in town that's going to let a competing food truck on its property. let a competing food truck on its property. So if that's what we want to do, we should be straightforward about that.
I think a lot of places have food trucks in addition to what they offer in the, at the restaurant. I know a lot of bars do that, like in cities, they don't serve a lot of food, and they use that to supplement their food option. But I mean, I agree that the downstream effect of limiting it to food and beverage will limit the number, like there will be fewer food trucks as a result. But I just think that it's a, it comes back to the use of, we've already decided that these are the places where food and beverages should be sold, and now we're just continuing with that. It seems like there's fewer externalities that are, negative externalities that might come out of that. But I do understand the opposition to it, too. It's just where I've come down on it.
Isn't the point of a food truck to have it in a location where food doesn't exist? I mean, generally speaking, like that's why we have it at the performing arts center, so like somebody could get up from their chair and like get food without having to leave the location? Or that's like why it would be at a football game, because there wouldn't otherwise be food present there? So to me, it seems redundant to have food trucks in a food, at a restaurant, because I just go to the restaurant, right?
Except that in theory, that food truck could, you know, from a restaurant, could travel elsewhere to the benefit of the restaurant.
Right, like somewhere else in town. Those people would be allowed to have a food truck other places, but you were saying that you thought it should be limited to those sites based on the traffic, but I don't think that, I don't follow the logic on that, only because, like I said, then it's a little bit redundant, but I understand the brick and mortar then having the benefit of also owning a food truck and being able to like take that food truck to another location, but that, like someone could hire a food truck, but it would be a food truck of a local business versus a out-of-town business, is what that, what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think the traffic concern is a big one, especially if a food truck, think about it if it's very, very popular. What you've essentially done is if you have them posted up and the Tractor Supply, for instance, what you've essentially allowed for is a pop-up fast-food restaurant with a drive-through. I'm not a big drive-through guy in general. I think we already have a lot of drive-throughs, and that's how I see it functionally happening. I've gone on road trips where I've seen like lines out the, out into the road for a food truck, and I think that's one of the concerns, is that we don't, we haven't planned for that to be there, and that's what we're risking. And now, it's great for the food truck, because it means it's doing really well, but we didn't establish that there should be a McDonald's there, for instance. That's my concern.
Is an ice cream truck a food truck?
That's a good question. So the answer is, is it can be if it, you know, if it falls under the definition which we have, which is to locate at a singular location and, you know, can drive from one to another. So yes, it is serving food, so it is under that definition.
So if we ban food trucks only, like it would have to be like a local restaurant in order for my kids to have like an ice cream cone on a Saturday afternoon in our driveway, by the ice cream truck coming around door to door, or is it allowed to move?
So that's a different, so that is, an ice cream truck that is, that is moving around town is a peddler and a, is not subject to these rules.
Okay, because that was going to change my whole position. I was about to...
Face on ice cream, right?
Yeah, I was joking.
I have a question for Mr. McGregor. The, if the board was to take, if the commission was to take no action, is it possible for certain food institutions that have food trucks to ask for a variance to allow for their trucks to legally be on their sites?
So the town zoning regulations permit use variances to the, as requested to the zoning board of appeals?
Can you repeat that?
But so, without, remember, if we, if you take no action, the mobile vendors are not permissible in town, with the exception of how we permit them today, which is on-town property, at football games, at places that where you get, where you get public gathering permits associated with agritourism, so, so they're permissible in those, at those locations and at those times and at those venues. Somebody's having a block party, private, the town is not going to interrupt that, and we don't do that today. That's bad business to do that. And what we're talking about is those kind of permanent to semi-permanent locations where, where a food truck would like to go, right? And that's really, to distinguish those really two choices, if you don't select either of those two choices, then we're going to continue to treat them as we treat them. They would not be permitted at Tractor Supply. They would not be permitted at a restaurant. They would not be, they would be permitted under those other exceptions.
My question, though, is, what if, for instance, Millwrights, if we took no action, Millwrights has a taco truck on their site, could they ask the town for a variance to allow for that truck to continue operations?
So Millwrights came to this commission for a site plan approval, and the Millwrights approval was based on the fact that that truck was essentially semi-permanent, meaning it was an accessory structure. It was going on once, one spot on that site in perpetuity. Essentially, you treated it as an accessory use, a use accessory to the site.
Thank you.
And I was just going to say one more thing. When Tucker made the point of the food and beverage locations, that would be any food and beverage establishment in the community, if you talk about it that way, because we do have some legally non-conforming food and beverage locations, at the very least is the Talke Mountain Collective, which is not specifically referenced in the zoning districts, per se, but it is, it is a legally established location. And so I would suspect that you'd want to include that in any motion. You can't say every, every other restaurant can have one, except, except for that location. It's a legally established location, so it would fit under.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
But if we take no action, the implication for the Talke Mountain, where the Hoop Site Country Club is what?
Yeah, we would, we would need to work with them to figure out a way forward.
That, to me, seems overly restrictive. Now, every single individual business has to come to us, especially if they already have them, now they have to, what, retroactively make them legal? That seems overly restrictive, more restrictive than simply allowing them to just be a subordinate use to the, to the site. If we take no action, we would be essentially lining up a bunch of different businesses that essentially currently have them and are now out of compliance and now have to come in and one by one.
Well, in many of those cases, we have, we've enforced the current standard. I mean, Chick-fil-A was at, has been at Tractor Supply previously, and we've had to go up there, staff has gone up there, or called the store, or done a number of things. So we still have the ability to enforce, and if no action was taken, we would obviously treat each case, you know, based on its facts, but we would deal with it in that matter.
But just going back to the issue that was raised by one of the speakers relative to Millwrights, that they have the right to have that food truck on their property, but in a very specific location, not up the road, in that location where it was approved. I don't know how many weeks it's been out of that location, and maybe there's a good reason for it, but the permit is for, is not from where that thing is sitting. And so that's a fact, but they do have a permit. And there isn't anything to stop any other restaurateur who owns or wants to buy a food truck from coming to us and asking us for the same accommodation for a specific spot on their property.
But that's more limiting than just having it as the...
Right, it is more limiting.
Right. But, so I, like I said, I'm not trying to like overly limit food trucks or say there shouldn't be food trucks in town. I just think that there's a, there's a good land use argument of where we expect there to be food, where that traffic flow has been considered, where our traffic engineers have worked hard. Like, the most recent, on the old Wagner site, like, part of the reason that that is acceptable is because people are going to have to go all the way around off the main road in order to get off there, where that consideration has not been made for a food truck in a very, you know, well, anywhere. That would be my concern.
So do we have a method, because I don't see it in here, I know we're allowing for it in like certain circumstances, but do we have a method for people, so you could apply for a public gatherings permit, and then you could be allowed, like, let's say, let's say Tractor Supply wanted to have an annual XYZ sale, and during that day that they're having a promotional event, they want to have a food truck at that event in which people would be purchasing individually their own food, that they're not going to buy the food for everybody, but that they wanted to have that available at their event on that given day? Like, that seems like it would be good for economic development. I see how like the, like semi-permanent existence of it is problematic for local businesses, but that, to me, seems like it would be beneficial. More people would be coming over there. Not everybody would go to the food truck. Some people might want to go have a sit-down meal in conjunction with going to an activity that they, that they were not going to go to otherwise, but went to that part of town because there was an event going on.
So we wouldn't call that a public gathering permit process, because the public gathering permits only apply to town property.
Oh, right, okay.
Public, but those one-offs are different, and we would treat them differently.
But if we passed, like, these rules, would it, would we be able to treat them differently? If we passed, like, if we said that, that food trucks weren't, if we say food trucks aren't allowed except for by restaurants, like, then would there be an avenue to allow that?
I mean, we have provisions for, you know, for temporary activities and temporary uses.
Okay.
We do. We're trying to get at the permanency.
But we don't have to crack that into the motion in any, do we have to? I mean, my bigger question, I guess, is do we need to go back to the drawing board? That's my bigger question.
Maybe.
Honestly, you're going to answer my own question?
Um, I mean, neither of these really make me happy. Neither, neither one of these amendments are really working for me, so I think there's been enough discussion, and everybody has made really valid points, but I feel like it would be really valuable, I know, to go back to the table and, and look at this again. I mean, there are, you know, to your point earlier, Mr. Chair, the previous commission agreed to a six oh vote, and that's not who is here now. So I think we need to have some further discussion.
Yeah, I'm going to have to agree with Shannon on that. I do think one thing we need to look at is the one-off, because I know that in the past, the town plan, your organization, George, has banned particular food trucks in one-off situations. I know of at least one instance where that has happened, and...
I would love to just take the opportunity to review that and kind of paint the picture of how we do it and give you some options.
Right, right. I think I agree with Shannon. Let's, there's been a lot of good discussion, a lot of good input from the public, there were new commissioners. Let's go back, take a look at this, and see if there's some way we can come up with a regulation that's going to get four votes, because I don't think either of these proposals is going to get four votes.
Okay, so, so the only thing I would offer then is, yeah, of course we'll do that, and we'll work with the community to figure out, you know, the best approach, but I would say that that gives you one additional option, which I think at this point, since you have closed the public hearing, I can't bring this back to you, I mean, you're better off withdrawing this application as it is, because I can't make changes now and do nothing. You know, you're better off just doing it.
What?
And then maybe we just go back, we'll have another work session, we'll roll our sleeves back up and...
And what's the advantage over doing nothing at this meeting?
So no, I guess it's an affirmative act. You can equally not take any action, and just, and it's just there.
Okay.
You could. I mean, that is an option, to simply take no action. It's your application.
But it's not going away. I mean, the issue is going to be an ongoing issue.
I don't know what we learn from more discussion. I think we've talked a lot about this. Like, I think you've mentioned one case where there should be the one-off, like, parties or celebrations or whatever that should be allowed. That, I think that might be the only kind of sticking point at this point. I think the rest of this, this, the second motion is good. I think that's the one sticking point, which I'm not even sure is, based on this language, is disallowed. So I would be okay with like putting that, having a new draft motion, but I think that's the big one, at least for me. If that would get a couple more votes, what we have is essentially a draft motion that's ready to go, plus one thing.
Well, that was essentially my question about whether or not we need to add that language to a motion. Either way, or I mean, not either way.
I'm not quite sure, I'm not quite sure I'm clear on what you're, what you're trying to differentiate here.
So, one of the, so the idea that there could be like, I don't know, the Tractor Supply wants to have like Tractor Supply Day, and one day they...
You know, you could include an exemption to that effect, or a caveat to that, to that effect.
Well, let me help you out here. I don't believe there's four votes on anything we're going to kind of cook up here right now. This needs more thought and more serious consideration than spur of the moment from one member.
Sure.
And, you know, and again, maybe, maybe just have another work session on it where you're not pressed by the requirement to act, other pending items, those kinds of things.
So having closed the public session, we could vote on one of the proposals, vote on another one of the proposals, or we could essentially move to withdraw the application so that it could be worked on further? Would that be to...
Yes, I think the taking no action...
It doesn't solve anything.
Doesn't solve anything if you take no action. You're better off withdrawing it and saying start over.
Okay. So does somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will move to withdraw the application.
I will second.
Is there a second? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay?
Abstain.
So we have five in favor and one abstention. So the motion to withdraw passes.
If we're all ready, we want to move on to the last item on our agenda for tonight. It's application 2338 of SL Simsbury LLC, owner Holden Sabato, applicant for a type four master site development plan, master site development plan pursuant to section 5.0b 4 of the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code for the construction of a 580-unit residential development revised at 432 residential units, 27,500 square feet flexible commercial space, and 5,000 square feet of retail at 200 Hot Meadow Street, the former Hartford Insurance property, South Parcel. Assessor map F-17 Block 150. Assessor map F seventeen, block one fifty-four, lot double, double oh nine dash two, Simsbury, Connecticut, oh six oh seven oh. So as we begin this segment, I, I wanna start by reminding all that our last meeting on this application was February fifth, when we had additional presentation by the applicant, where further changes were introduced. That was followed by additional public comments, and that input was followed by commission discussion, which concluded with two decisions. First, to close the public hearing that night, and second, to request that staff prepare a draft denial motion that we may wanna act on at our next meeting, which is tonight. Both of those questions were decided by affirmative vote to go ahead. Staff has prepared that draft document for our consideration. I would expect that you've all had opportunity to see it. Tonight, we can take time for additional discussion, if you'd like, or we can go right to focus on making a decision on the application, which we'd start with a reading of the draft denial motion for the record, and then seeking a second before moving into discussion of the motion. Personally, I feel the, the weeks since our last meeting have given me enough time to further digest the information we've accumulated. I don't feel a need, personally, for more deliberation. So it might help us to go around, my thought, and if we would each share our thoughts as to preference for more discussion or moving on to a decision. So, I wonder if we start down there. David, what do you think? So the question is, move on, uh, to focus on a decision or have more discussion of the application?
I would be ready to move on to a decision, and I am, um, satisfied with what the staff has provided us as far as a, um, proposed motion.
I don't need any further discussion.
Can you repeat that again?
Oh, I don't need any further discussion.
Tucker?
I, I have some discussion, um, but I'm willing to save it for the discussion section of the motion rather than upfront.
I would recommend you simply get the motion on the record.
Okay.
Get the motion, then have discussion.
That's, that's what I'd like to do.
Okay, then. I'm gonna have Tony to read the motion, then we'll come back to your position on going forward. But we will ask for a second on the motion.
Read the motion?
Yeah, if you would, yeah. No, we're, we're not done. We're just interrupting that process, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Move the Simsbury Zoning Commission denies application ZC number twenty-three dash thirty-eight of SL Simsbury LLC, owner Holden Sabato, applicant for a type-four master site development plan, MSDP, pursuant to section five point zero point B, point four of the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code, HS FBC, for the construction of a five-hundred-and-eighty-unit residential development revised to four-hundred-and-thirty-two residential units, twenty-seven thousand five hundred square feet of flex industrial commercial and a five-thousand-square-foot restaurant at two-hundred Hop Meadow Street, former Hartford Insurance property south. Assessor's map F seventeen, block one-five-four, lot zero-zero-nine dash two, Simsbury, Connecticut, zero-six, zero-seven, zero, based upon the following findings. One, the proposal does not meet the purpose and intent of the adopted Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code. The proposal fails to achieve the purpose and intent of a mixed-use vibrant community. In relevant part, section one point zero point A of the HS FBC states that the purpose and intent of the code is to, quote, "encourage the reuse of the South Hartford site and building for office, technology, healthcare, and support services with a mix of complementary uses, including housing, retail offices, commercial services, and supporting long-term attractiveness for both employment uses and neighborhood uses," close quote. Part C of section one point zero, quote, "encourages the development of vertical and horizontal mixed-use areas," close quote. Section four point zero, section eight, sets forth illustrative plans, which are included only for guidance on the pattern and character of development, but, quote, "The illustrative master plans also provide information on the general mix and intensity of uses, neighborhood character, and design intent. The different versions of the illustrative master plans are included to show different potential development outcomes and scenarios and illustrate the important principles of planning a mixed-use walkable neighborhood," close quote. These above sections of the HS FBC show a pattern and expectation that the Hartford South property shall be developed with a mix of uses integrated in order to form a vibrant, walkable community. The applicant's proposal, as revised, remains overwhelmingly a residential project in land area, square footage, and use mix. One twenty-seven thousand five hundred square foot flex commercial building with no specific uses disclosed, and one five thousand square foot restaurant does not meet the intent of a mixed-use development, nor do the small amount of non-residential uses support any, quote, "long-term attractiveness for employment uses," close quote. The commission finds that the purpose and intent of the HS FBC, section one point zero, is to redevelop Hartford South for office, technology, and healthcare uses with housing and retail as complementary uses, in quotes, and not as the primary use on-site as proposed by the applicant. The newly introduced non-residential uses provided by the applicant on February fifth, twenty-twenty-four, are not integrated into the development, neither vertically nor horizontally. They are segregated from the residential uses. We note that the planning commission provided recommendation on the record to the zoning commission, which stated in relevant part, quote, "The commission recommended the project include a true mixed-use approach with addition of integrated non-residential elements, commercial, retail, office, et cetera." The commission stated that mixed-use elements would provide a better sense of place than a one-hundred percent residential development. Further, the commission added that the original intent of the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code for the South Parcel was to include both residential and commercial uses. The applicant's inclusion of a limited non-residential element simply does not go far enough in establishing the integrated mixed-use redevelopment of the Hartford South site that the community, community envisioned. Two, the proposal fails to provide an appropriate building scale and transitions to fit the adjoining design context. The North Site was developed primarily residential development. There are approximately four-hundred-and-twenty residential units approved and constructed, along with a small commercial element, approximately twenty-one thousand square feet in two buildings fronting Hop Meadow Street. The lack of a primary office, technology, healthcare, or other non-residential element on the South Parcel prohibits any opportunity to provide transitions between residential and non-residential components. The South Parcel provides adequate transitions for its three residential types. However, the transitions for onsite non-residential, owing to the fact that they are segregated and not integrated, not integrated, are quite abrupt. Moreover, when combined, the North and South Parcels represent over eight-hundred-and-fifty residential units and only a total of forty-nine thousand square foot, feet of non-residential. In conflict with the purpose and intent of the HS FBC as proposed, the commercial components act as complementary uses to the residential uses, not to converse. Three, the proposal does not provide a minimum or appropriate level of public benefits such as usable civic and open spaces, economic development, or employment opportunities. The development does not provide usable civic and open spaces for the public at large. There are no public parks, no civic sites, and no public sites proposed. There are limited employment opportunities provided with one twenty-seven thousand five hundred square foot flex office building and a small restaurant. The permanent employment opportunities as part of, as part of the, as part of the HSBC, HS FBC, mixed-use development are intended to replace in part some of the economic development and employment opportunities lost when the former six-hundred-thousand-square-foot Hartford Insurance building closed, and the approximately fifteen-hundred employees who worked there moved to other locations. To restate, section one point zero eight, the intent of the HS FBC was to encourage, quote, "the reuse of the South Hartford site and building for office, technology, healthcare, and supportive services," close quote. These uses would provide the foundation for employment opportunities. This application does none of these things. Four, the project represents unknown impacts on the public health, safety, and welfare of the general public. The zoning commission has heard extended testimony on the record from dozens of Simsbury residents and town departments identifying impacts related to the project, including, but not limited to, public school and other community impacts. The applicant's school impact data conflicts with the Simsbury School District's anticipated impacts related to total enrollment and per-student costs. The record reflects an expected increased demand for public services, including, but not limited to, police, fire, and ambulance calls, and an increased need and demand for athletic facilities and fields. The application does not address this increased demand on public services. Visual impact on scenic hillside and ridge lines. Revised to three stories, but at a height estimated over forty feet, height of the ten apartment buildings may hinder scenic views. The applicant has not provided a revised view analysis definitively establishing that scenic view will be, that the scenic view will be preserved. Rental and homeownership. Section one point zero G asks the applicant to, quote, "include a range of residential options that reflect changing lifestyles considering both market demand and town preferences," close quote. To that end, citizens and zoning commissioners requested that some portion of the residential units be offered for, as for-sale units. The town currently has limited entry level for first-time home buyer products. Of the four-hundred-and-thirty-two units now proposed, all offer rent. The commission finds that offering a variety of residential types, including both for-rent and for-sale options, meets the intent of the HS FBC, providing a one-hundred percent rental project does not.
Second?
Was that Kate, seconding that motion? And now we'll, uh, resume commenting on, for each commissioner to comment on whether they prefer at this point to focus on additional discussion or to move on to the decision-making process. So.
I'd like to have some discussion, please.
Okay. And Tony? We'll come back to, let's see what the.
All right, if you wanna discuss, that's fine. If one commissioner wants to have additional discussion, that's fine with me.
Okay.
But, but had he not said anything, what would you have said?
I would've said I was ready to vote.
Okay, well, and then I'm, I'm, I've, I don't need more time for discussion.
Just, you, you need to allow discussion.
Pardon me?
You should allow discussion amongst the commissioners.
I, but we don't need to stop this process to hear what he wants to discuss. We can come back.
Yeah.
When we see.
Sure.
Okay. And, uh, Shannon, your thoughts?
Okay.
What's your preference?
Um, I, if, if there is a commissioner who wants to have a discussion, we should have a discussion.
We will. But what's your preference? To have a discussion because he wants to have a discussion? Okay.
Well, yeah.
And Tanner? Excuse me, Tucker, why don't you start the?
Sure.
Discussion.
Um, alright. So, I, we heard a lot of, a lot, a lot of testimony, um, about this, this, um, project. Obviously, the mass majority, majority of the testimony was in opposition to the project, but I wanna, and, and I, the commissioners know this already, cause we, we've all taken the trainings, we've all, you know, I'm, I'm getting mine updated, don't worry, um, uh, we, we've taken the trainings. So we know that, that PA twenty-one twenty, twenty-one dash twenty-nine forbids character as being one of the things that we are considering. The reason being that character is, is fairly arbitrary, um, and can mean anything from, you know, something that one would typically consider, like, you know, brick or the color of the building, whatever, to anything from whether or not illegal immigrants might be moving into the project. Something which was stated on the public record several times by members of the public. Obviously, no one in the commission is going to be considering the demographics of who might be moving in. We would not be using zoning to affect demographics. But, obviously. Now, when it comes to the developer, the developer, when we gave our feedback, reduced the number of units of the project. Increased the affordability, the deed restricted affordability from ten percent to fifteen percent. They added in commercial developments, which in this market, they'll probably be operating almost at a loss. Commercial development is extremely challenging in the modern, uh, economy. They also created significant naturally occurring affordable housing through the duplexes. Duplexes with multiple bedrooms can be shared by roommates and provide an excellent housing option for lots of different people of lots of different income levels. I'll remind the commission that we are in a housing crisis and have a homeless population the highest it's ever been in Connecticut. Last year, it came, went up by thirteen percent. And they were trying to put in sixty-five deed-restricted affordable units in this development. Now, in terms of the, uh, environmental concerns, a lot of them make a lot of sense. It's a significant project. There's a lot of traffic that'd be associated. I will say that the, the lot that exists right now is not a field, it is not nature, it is a parking lot entirely made of impervious surface. This would reduce the impervious surfaces on that property and would therefore reduce flooding. Um, in terms of questions about size, resources, the school's absolutely valid concern, again, it's a, it's a large project, and it was stated in the, uh, in the motion for denial. But again, we are in a, it's not as though those are not to be meant to be considered, but it should be considered in the context of, we are in a massive housing crisis. Um, I'm constantly seeing on our, uh, social media in Simsbury, people asking about where they can try to find a place to afford to live. Uh, senior citizens cannot downsize, they don't have anywhere to go, meaning they stay in their existing home, meaning new residents cannot move into that home, new residents can't move into a smaller unit. That is, that is something to consider against some of the very valid concerns about size, resources, schools, what have you. In terms of the deviations from the Form-Based Code, which there certainly are, that they've been laid out, I think a lot of the deviations they made, made the project better, not worse. I think they, uh, reduced the, uh, they reduced the density of what would have been required. And again, with the, the, the economy being the way it is, I think the amount of commercial, in my opinion, that they put in was enough. Now, that's, that's just an opinion, that's obviously not any kind of, you know, legal, uh, framework. But, in my opinion, I like what the, the developers put forward here. I think they've worked very, very hard to make this project, uh, compliant. Um, so I would ask the, the commissioners to consider voting no on this motion, and then have, uh, staff drafted, uh, a motion for approval. That's not a motion, I'm just saying, that's my recommendation to the other commissioners. That's all.
Other comments? Shannon, did you wanna add something?
Yes. The only, um, objection I, I had to the amendment, or the motion, I'm sorry, was the use of the words neighborhood character. That was the only issue I had with the, with the motion. Um, other than that, I, um, thank you for your thoughts. Tucker, I don't agree.
Thank you for your thoughts. What did you say? I didn't hear.
I said, "Thank you for your thoughts, Tucker, I don't agree."
Oh, oh, excuse me. I hear you now. Tony?
I, you know, Tucker raises some good points, and I think the developer did make a significant move from the initial application to the revised application. And my hope was that there would be a further revision, but at our last, uh, public hearing, the applicant stated they wanted a decision. So, that's what we're here to do. I, I can support the project at its current site, but, that, and that's all that's.
I can't support the project at its current site, but that, and that's all that's in front of us because the applicant has asked us to make a decision.
Anybody else? Kate, you're looking down here, did you have something else to say?
We have a round project trying to be fit into a square space. It doesn't work. And while I certainly understand the difficulties with creating commercial space, having commercial space work, I was the former vice chair of the Economic Development Commission of this town, and I know how hard it is to do that. But nonetheless, this particular form-based zoning called for very specific requirements. Those requirements have not been met by the applicant with the current application, and that is why I support the denial.
Any other comments? Well, we have a motion in a second, why don't we go ahead then and vote? All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
So it's five to one in favor of the denial motion, as it was read. Thanks for your patience and to the audience for taking the time to be with us, meeting after meeting, but thank you. Well, and just one more thing, and to the Silvermans, we hope to see you again at some point with a proposal that is more consistent with the, with the zoning code. Thank you. And, and a motion to adjourn? Okay. Thank you.